Okay, we're gonna call the city council meeting to order Monday, April 11th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
David Paradise.
Nicole Andrioff.
Kirby Moyno.
Tom Marslick.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonewell.
Jared Vogie.
Dan Reamer.
Invocation. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in Thanksgiving for this beautiful day in your creation. We thank you for the warmth of the sun. And Lord, especially, we thank you for your glorious son, Jesus, who came and died on that cross, taking all of our sins away, that we might be set free to serve you and to serve one another with a clear conscience. God, as the city council meets here tonight, we ask that you would anoint them with your wisdom, with your heart for these people of Montrose. And we pray, Lord, that every decision that's made would be a decision that would be a blessing to everybody in this community. We thank you for them and pray your blessing over them and their families in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have two changes on the agenda tonight. One of them was just a typo under the consent agenda, item six and then G1. The meeting date is May 2nd at 4:00 PM, not 7:00 PM. And then the second change is item eight, C, under Personnel and Employee Development, changing advertising for operator one position to a maintenance worker one position.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda modification.
I will second. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Ms. Andrioff?
Yes.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Wright County sheriffs?
Good evening, mayor and council. Sheriff's office, since the last city council meeting, has responded to 183 calls for service. Of those calls for service, 63 were traffic stops, and we had seven citations for traffic violations. Since the last council meeting, we've also had three in custody arrests. One was for court order violation. Another was a domestic assault. And the other was a canceled IPS driver who was also charged for obstruction. Since the last council meeting, we haven't seen any trends in crime. It's been going steady now with temperatures warming up, but no reoccurring issues. Any questions?
Anything that the Wright County is seeing in general with some upticks in crimes or anything we should be worried about?
No. Lot we, other than, speed has been a factor lately. We've seen a lot of speeders. And I think, so like I said, we've had seven citations and 63 traffic stops. Sometimes what happens is we get the speeders coming through town, but we might pull them over in the township once they get through the city. So sometimes the numbers might not reflect all the stops that we've been doing. So speed and then cellphone use while driving, those have been huge. And now with temperatures and no snow on the roads, we've seen the uptick in that, so. Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City council?
City council meeting, had the Easter egg hunt and I think that's a fire department meeting.
City council, Montrose days and egg hunts.
City council meeting, Easter egg hunt, the Wright County Mayor's Association, and a meeting with the Buffalo High School principal about the student liaison position.
We had a city council meeting, Wright County Board of Commissioners, three meetings there. Montrose Waverly Chamber of Commerce, resident complaint and Public Works Director meeting, pre-construction meeting for the downtown improvement project and the Easter egg hunt.
Council and Easter egg hunt. Student liaison discussion. Did we have any applications get put in yet?
We've not received any in the office. Have we, Kristy?
I know that there's been a couple calls about them, so.
I know there's some interest, yeah.
Hopeful of the parents that I've talked to that will get one here soon, so. Fire department. I think the only thing that they had this month was the activity report.
If anybody has questions, they can contact Kevin about that.
Personnel, employee development.
So we were originally going to advertise for an operator one position, losing Danny out of the operators. We do have a city employee that is interested in the operator one position. However, he is not currently qualified and does not have the D licenses that are required, and the union won't let us promote him until he has those, so he needs to remain a maintenance worker. And then we can just hire an entry level maintenance worker to replace him. And hopefully, we're expecting within about six months, he should have those licenses and be able to move up to that operator one position.
Is that a realistic timeframe, Danny?
If he passes them.
If he passes the test, yeah.
You know. He has to, I know one is like the end of August and the September. That's gonna be the wastewater, and then the water one, it'll be next March, so.
Oh, so about a year maybe.
It'll be, it'll be a little while, and then he's gotta pass them.
Yeah.
If you fail them, I believe you gotta wait three months to retest, so.
Are you able to help out with a lot of the water stuff still until we have him certified in those?
Yeah, I'm helping both guys out.
When are we gonna start advertising for this position?
What was that?
When are we gonna start advertising for this position?
We can post as soon as this Thursday in the paper.
I'll make a motion to approve posting for Public Works Maintenance Worker One entry level position.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll vote yes. Mr. Marslick?
Yes.
Mr. Solars?
Yes.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Park and rec.
Mayor and council, city staff has received five applications for commission members, which were included in your packet this evening, for consideration for approval to be on park and recreation, to get that back up and running.
I also saw that, other than two that said anytime will work, the only day that the other ones all had in common was Wednesday at 5:00.
And we can certainly talk about changing the meeting dates.
I will make a motion to approve all five applicants, Duane Isle, Michelle Otto, Edward Colasa Jr., Kayla McCluskey, and Toby Nelson.
I'll second.
Further discussion on the motion? I'll vote yes. Ms. Andrioff?
Yes.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 to reestablish the park and rec with those five members. And then do we wanna discuss the meeting date now and motion for that? Or you just wanna post for that later? Because we would need to change the schedule, right?
We should probably have our first meeting on a Thursday, when we normally would, and then they can decide and make a recommendation to council to change it if they wanna do that at that time.
Okay.
So we could have our first meeting in May.
Okay. City planner?
Mayor and council, before you for consideration this evening is the Overston Edition final plat. As you can see from the material in the packet, the developer has complied with all the setback requirements and all other recommendations from staff. Staff recommends approval of the 13-unit townhome residential product, project. The developer agreement was also included in the packet for review and consideration for approval. If approval is considered, there is a resolution to approve the PUD, the preliminary and final plat, as well as the developer agreement. And the developers are here this evening if anybody has any questions for them.
Do you have any questions about the Overston second edition? Sure.
I'm ten, circling out from Seventh Street North. I'm just curious, are these gonna be for rent or for sale?
You will need to approach the podium if you're gonna discuss it, yeah. That's okay. Thank you.
I'm just curious what the rent, approximately what the rent would be on the, what type of demographic are you looking at?
14 to 17, I heard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The only thing I'd ask is, let's see, on page four, it talks about the PUD subject to the following conditions. There are, you know, several conditions. Do we have dates on those, fulfilling those conditions? Talking about submitting building elevations modified to illustrate the staffing of units. The other one is submitting building elevations modified to include a minimum of 25% of the area of all building facades shall have exterior finish of brick. Is that in the structural plans now?
Yeah, we, thanks for your guys' time, by the way.
Sure.
We've, yeah, we've got 25%. We do have room to add some along the front if we would like to. Mostly brick. And then also, we need to add the wing walls in the back. That's just part of the landscaping. And our biggest requirement is getting that 20 feet from the east line. So we reduce the square footages of each unit so we could achieve that.
Okay.
Any more questions?
No issues on any of those?
No, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I will make a motion then to approve the final plat.
The resolution, the 2022, 2022-18.
The 2022, resolution 2022-18. I thought they were all separate.
I'll second.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. City engineer?
Good evening, mayor, council. The first item in your packets this evening. Happy to report that on March 22nd, we received seven bids for the Phase Two project. All the bids were relatively close to one another, so it was a good bidding climate. The bids ranged from a low bid in the amount of $2,588,459.78 to a high bid in the amount of $3,250,592.48. The low bid was submitted by Northdale Construction of Albertville, Minnesota. The bid tab is in your packets this evening with all the bidders listed there. And there is a resolution number 2022-19 for council's consideration to accept the bids and award the project to Northdale Construction.
How soon did they say they were gonna start on that? Did they?
Yeah, so we've been, we've been in touch with the contractor. They've actually asked if they could submit shop drawings and all that stuff already. They're definitely very eager to go, to get started. And pending council's approval of the resolution this evening, we'll be scheduling a pre-con very soon and meeting with them to get their schedule. I know they're eager to start as soon as possible.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Resolution 2022-19, accepting the low bid on the Phase Two Downtown Improvement Project.
I will second. Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Andrioff?
Yes.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. BNSF easement agreement memo?
Mayor, council, the second item in your packets this evening is related to the BNS easement, BNSF easement agreement. As you're aware, we were corresponding with BNSF, and we've been long awaiting this agreement. They did provide it as it relates to the easement required for the Phase Two improvements along the railroad corridor, given the limited city right-of-way in that corridor. The easement was in your packets this evening. There's also a resolution adopting that easement agreement entering into a memorandum of easement with BNSF Railway Company.
Are there any questions on the easement agreement?
I'll go ahead and make a motion on Resolution 2022-20, approving the easement agreement with the BNSF.
Second.
Further discussion? So with, with getting the easement approved, will there be more space up closer to center, away from the sidewalk and the road? Or are they still gonna be next to each other?
I'm not sure I understand the question because the sidewalk will now be on the north side.
Okay. But, right, it's, will it still be directly on the road, though, instead of, or will it be off a little bit? Because right now, the sidewalk up there is directly, I mean, the road and the sidewalk meet together.
The sidewalk will be behind the back of the curb, yes.
That's, that's what I was getting at, sorry. No problem. Any other discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Updates?
Sure. The, really the only updates I have are related to the projects here. Phase One, there was a meeting held last week with the contractor, Keighley Underground. This week, they're intending to start laying out that temporary water main that's required for the project essentially. As a result of the sewer and water construction, all the residents and businesses will be hooked up to temporary water so that their water service is uninterrupted during construction. They're anticipating, beginning next week, the week of the 18th, that they're gonna start reclaiming a portion of the Phase One improvements project, which will allow them to begin installing the utilities. So essentially, the reclaiming is, they'll have a big machine in here. It'll grind up the bituminous and the aggregate. It'll look essentially like a gravel road. But they'll salvage that material and use that for, for the construction and then begin putting the pipes in within the street. We've also been notified by XL Energy that they'll resume their gas main installation on the week of April 25th. As I mentioned earlier, with the Phase Two, the contractor is interested in getting going as soon as possible, so. With the adoption of that resolution, we'll begin preparing contracts and getting those routed for signatures with the contractor, so. Those conclude my updates, aside from anything else that's not.
Now, with, with the Phase One project, are we going to be handling tearing up Highway 12 and redoing that?
Storm sewer, yes.
Yep. Is, is that something that the city's gonna have to pay for now that they're asking us to do it? Or is that something we would've had to pay for no matter what?
It's city utility would always spend the city cost, yep.
And that'll be about a week that Highway 12 will be shut down up there?
Detour for approximately a week, yep. And I just, I would encourage, if council members get any questions about the projects, encourage people to go to the city website and the project website. I believe we issued the latest update like Friday. So that's gonna be the, the best source for the latest information as it pertains to both the Phase One and Phase Two projects.
So I had, I had another question. So I had a resident that reached out and was asking about on Emerson, that short little area that we're gonna be doing there by Carver Field, if XL would be able to relocate the power lines to the city side of the road on Carver side. A lot of it has to do with those residents don't want their trees to be trimmed down anymore with protecting of the power lines. And I know that's an XL question, if they would wanna move it when we do all this tearing up. But I said I would bring it up.
Yeah, we can certainly have those conversations with XL. I do know that, I anticipate that they would respond with a price or a cost for that, but we can certainly ask that question.
Yeah. Any questions for Jared? Public Works.
Mayor, council, line item number one, property demolition at 101. Obviously, the garage is gone. That was the minimum of what needed to be done for this project. The house can stay. It's not in the way. Of course, we are gonna take it down. I haven't heard anything back from this guy that was on vacation before. So I'm kinda waiting on that. If not, we'll just move forward and get it demoed somehow.
I did talk to XL, and they will be pulling the gas and electric.
Okay.
Probably in the next 10, 15 days, something like that.
So that's what I have on that.
Will the fire department resume training in that now that he has not responded?
I'm gonna give him to the end of this week to respond to me. And if he doesn't, yeah, I'll let the fire department go back in there. I mean, they're in there already, but they can wreck stuff. Let's put it that way. So. Line item two. In the council packet is a quote from InControl for our main influent lift station control panel replacement. It, it's the main lift station at the wastewater facility. It has been in operation since 2004, so it is 18 years old. Our controllers have been acting up, going out. The guys have worked Friday nights and the Saturday mornings. The controllers are obsolete. They do not make them anymore. So we can't just replace what's in there and keep it going. And that's expected when it comes to that stuff. The reason why I only got one quote on this is because InControl is the main company the city used when we built the wastewater facility and our water wellhouse, wellhouses. They are also gonna tie this in with our SCADA system. They built the original panel. The original panel, the structure itself was not made out of stainless steel, which is another reason why I think it was an issue. The new panel will be made out of stainless steel. And that's all I have for you all. In the quote, on the page five of the quote, this is just for them to build this panel. We would have to hire an electrician on top of the $47,362 to hook this panel up. Also, there's a quote to hook it into our SCADA system for $5,311. Our SCADA is what calls us out. As of right now, we don't have a lot of features on that. I would like to upgrade this to the new technology so we can see what's going on. So essentially, we're upgrading the main lift, the most important lift station in this town. It takes all of Waverly sewage and all of Montrose sewage. And it's the last station that it hits before our treatment plant process. If that goes down, we are in trouble. Let's just put it that way.
Hey, Dan, are they giving you the, I didn't see anywhere where that factory talk software, you know, for Allen Bradley for these micrologics. Are they giving you the software?
I, I would assume. We had the software up top. We just did not, we have the software backups on like CD drives for what we got now. I'm assuming they'll do that again. If not, I'll make sure. But we still, we don't technically hook on to the, to them with our laptops and control them. They come in and do all that, and they will do that as part of this bid. The only thing that we can do is, once the operator interface is up, that's the only thing that we'll be able to control.
So, once they establish all of the parameters and the function, if you need to adjust some control parameters somewhere, you have to call them back in to do that?
Correct. Unfortunately, yes. That's the way it is at both our wellhouses, the other building at the wastewater facility. When the city decided in 2003 to build that plant in 2004, they went with InControl and our hands are, that's who we, I mean, we could bid out the panel itself to a different company, but InControl would still have to come in and put their controls in there to match up with everything else we have. So our hands are somewhat tied.
I was just looking at, from a long-term standpoint, would it be better to have one of the guy, one of your guys train to make changes?
I could, I could ask InControl about that, but I'm gonna bet they're not willing to train, because then they lose their business, so.
Well.
Right, I mean.
You can make that part of the package.
Right.
Say, okay.
I can call Jeff Iverson with InControl. That's the guy who printed up this bid. The main reason we wanna get rolling on this, it's gonna take them eight to nine months to even get the parts to start building this cabinet because of COVID. Everything is way behind. That means you're looking at installing this in November. So that lift station has to get shut down completely, and we have to pump with a trailer pump up the hill while they're installing this thing. It'll be a nerve-wracking day for me, for sure. But the sewage comes into that lift station and there's no stopping it. It's flowing, it's flowing, it's coming downhill, and that's it.
Do you, quick, quick question for you. In regards to the price for this, does, do we charge the city of Waverly extra for issues like this that come up? Or is this something that they could help pay for because we take their crap?
We charge them like a capital cost. We have a contract with Waverly, so we can't just charge them for stuff like this. I mean, this is part of our routine maintenance, so.
But it's in the contract that there's that built in that they already pay for?
We charge them capital costs, so they're kind of like paying for the plan too, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. So I would probably need something for you guys to approve that quote to.
Yeah, you would need a motion for that.
Motion?
Yep.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and contract with InControl for the replacement of the lift station controls.
I'll second that. Further discussion on the motion?
Are you passing both, the 47 and the 5,000? Are you gonna do that individually?
Yeah, because I, well, it's not gonna be any good unless you connect it to your telemetry, right?
Right. They just, that's the way they quoted it all, but yeah.
Yeah, for, for both.
Okay.
Including the option.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion? Further discussion on the motion?
I will say, working for IT for a city, I deal with lift stations on a daily basis. I know how important they are. So that's, that's all I got to say about it.
Any other discussion? Ms. Andrioff? Mr. Paradise?
Hi.
Mr. Solars?
Hi.
Mr. Marslick?
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0 to purchase the new lift station control.
Thank you. Line item three, sidewalk repair and a little bit of maintenance. The two repairs, it's a quote in here from, I had Mr. Henry here get from, oh, I've seen to have lost it.
Jordan Construction?
Yeah. Jordan Construction. Anyways, it's for the repair of the two main breaks in Highway 12, the sidewalk there. It is well-traveled. Obviously, it connects the trailer court and so forth to repair those. And then actually finished the concrete path on Aspen Lane to the walking trail that was never done years and years and years ago where it's just gravel sitting there now. So I, I just had it here. So that's what that second quote for. I would need a motion for you guys to approve it. It is Jordan Concrete out of Montrose here, so totaling 3,400 for all three repairs.
A little off topic, but in regards to the Highway 12 there, do we know why the water main broke there those couple times that it did? Is it just cold or wear and tear?
So my understanding, when Highway 12, this might not be factual, but when Highway 12 was redone in 98, that line was supposed to be upgraded there. And I was told by residents and a former Public Works guy, the city cheapened out and decided not to replace that part of the water main. And now we're paying for it. So yeah, it broke multiple times. And that's not, I dealt with two other breaks on that main prior to this year. Knock on wood, we didn't have any for seven, and we had three of them in a matter of two months. So when the state comes through next year, I would highly suggest to replace that line.
I don't know if anybody, next year or the year after?
Or the year after.
It's getting pushed back.
They keep moving it out.
Yeah. I'm not saying what I told you was factual, but this is what I've heard. It does not match our prints. Our prints say it's eight inch and it's a six inch line, so.
So likely.
Yeah, likely it did not get done to save money. I would assume. So yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the $3,400 bid for the sidewalk repair and installing sidewalk on the corner of Aspen and County Road 12. I will second. Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Hi.
Mr. Marslick?
Hi.
Ms. Andrioff?
Hi.
Mr. Paradise?
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Line item four in our Public Works compost site hiring. I talked, we had three applicants only, and the one came in today. I did call two of them today. I am interviewing them Thursday morning. I guess my question is, how fast you guys want this open?
Well, I have seen.
This is going to be my question for you, is when are we going to open it up?
Right.
So the reason why I'm going to go with two is they can work out keeping it open instead of having Public Works or a council member out there. Hopefully, they can work it out. I did tell them both, most likely, we will want it open starting next week, so.
And they'll just be on like a rotating schedule, like one Tuesday, one Thursday, every other Saturday?
Whatever they work out.
Okay.
I'm going to let them hash it out.
It'll probably be, you know, like switching Saturdays, that kind of stuff, so you don't have to give up every Saturday.
And then I will call the third guy and I'll say thank you and ask him if one of them has a health issue or something happens, is he willing to maybe come in and fill in if he would like? So. So that's that. Will we be opening next, if they are able, we'll open it next week. They did ask when it ends. We know that's a big debate here. I told them they most likely will be working into November, depending upon the weather. So, and like I said, I'm interviewing both at the same time on Thursday morning, so. Number five, updates. Obviously, we all know, we got a lot of stuff going on in town. I've been busy. But that's, I'm currently looking for a plow truck for replacement. I'm getting quotes on that. Tom gave me some information I think will be useful for me. So I'm also looking for a city fleet truck. I'm having issues. Ford, I was told, quit their fleet line right now in production. GM quit their fleet line production. So I'm looking for a plain Jane regular cab pickup truck that's four-wheel drive, and I'm having a hard time finding it. We might be buying used, or we might hold on to this money, roll it into next year and buy the bigger truck. We want a one-ton dump truck, not like a plow truck, but a dump truck. And those are quite spendy, so that's what I am working on currently. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Danny?
Have we, last meeting, we talked about the trail at Forest Creek. Have we gone out for any bids on that yet?
Not that I know of. No, so there's a plan being put together for that so that we can obtain quotes from contractors, but those have not gone out. Those should be out within the next week or two.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Danny? Old business cleanup day and amnesty item discussion.
Mayor and Council, in the past, we, I did some research because we talked about it last time and wanted to know how much we were spending. So this year, we have budgeted $8,000, I think Michael said, for the cleanup day. In the past, we have spent between $8,000 and $10,000 on the whole cleanup day, which included the amnesty items. And we do take in some money from residents to offset the costs a bit. So I believe if we keep budgeting around this $8,000 mark, we will not need to drain the money in the garbage fund, and we can now use that for a plow truck, which is needed.
Awesome work.
Yep.
So we'll keep the two, the two items, and the people want them picked up, they got to pay for pickup fee?
Yep, they just pay the $5 per item pickup fee. And then they get two, each resident gets two free items, whether that's picked up or on cleanup day.
Okay. Well, with that, then I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-11, Resolution approving the transfer of funds to close the refuse garbage fund.
I will second.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Solars?
Hi.
Mr. Marslick?
Hi.
Ms. Andrioff?
Hi.
Mr. Paradise?
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0 to approve Resolution 2022-11. Herzog Property seeding discussion.
Mayor and Council, we've been working on this. It was supposed to be done in November, and now we're going to have to do spring seeding. I believe the property owner is here this evening. She was told that this would be done between April 15th and May 1st, weather permitting. We're just wondering if we have any more information from the contractor regarding a start time or what method they'd be using to plant grass? And if you want to come up April, you can.
I'm, I'm also shaky from a blood sugar issue.
Okay.
So I just need to sit here.
Okay.
Were you able to get ahold of him as to why he didn't finish it when he said he was going to before?
Yeah, it was, I think that was a discussion last fall, but at any rate, he had some scheduling issues as well as some employee issues with health-related items that he couldn't get there. He's indicated, as Jess mentioned, he's going to get here as soon as he can. He told us a date of April 15th or shortly thereafter. All weather dependent, of course. That's what everybody's saying at this time of year, but yeah, he's going to be in there as soon as possible.
And what kind of seeding is he going to be doing?
Have you talked to him?
Have not. In terms of how he's going to do it?
Yeah, I mean, is he going to do just regular seeding?
Hydroseeding or like blanket or?
Yeah, it's our understanding that he's going to be seeding it, raking it in, and then using blanket. Because if you recall, last fall, we talked about removing staples from that blanket, which he has agreed to do after the grass is growing.
I have a question about watering. We want a dormant seed in this place. You know, we don't want to have to water a lot. We don't have that option now. Since you were supposed to be going to seed on the far side of the fence, inside the retaining wall, and a few areas, you're going to help and stop the erosion on your side, or my side, or go to your side. You're going to be seeding your side too at this time, right?
Has that been a discussion?
The, yeah, that's been the discussion. The contractor has some cleanup work to do on the city's side of the project as well, so there'll be, his intent is to do that all at the same time. So with the priority being the private property owner's side of the fence to get that done.
Okay. So if you're going to do that at the same time, can we talk about the watering then? I don't have the ability to water it as much as brand-new seed going on this spring is going to need. I'm not complaining about the amount of water. I just don't have the ability because I have nine gardens and I have one outside faucet. My morning is spent watering the biggest garden, and then as the day goes on and the sun goes down over the other ones, I water the other eight. So can we, if you're going to need to water your side, can I water it with your fire hydrant? Turn it on and turn it off for your side and my side at the same time? It would stop Public Works from having to come out there to water it.
Thoughts?
Well, I'll make a kind of, we've already had situations where people have asked us about watering and tying into the fire hydrant, and we set precedence by saying no. We weren't not going to do that. We're not going to allow people to water anything from our fire hydrants. And I think we need to maintain that.
We had agreed on dormant seed, though, and last fall, we were not informed that he wasn't coming until we saw it on a video of a meeting and came back for the next meeting. At that time, we were informed that Tom himself was sick, and that's why it didn't get done last fall. But we were never contacted by anybody. City council, city staff, Public Works, city engineer, Tom, nobody has contacted us. And up until now, I actually contacted the city to find out what was going to happen.
I know one of the biggest issues we had was contact in general, where we weren't getting replies about it. And so the, we wanted it done in the fall so that we didn't have to have this conversation or any of these issues where the snow could have taken care of it all. But we did tell a resident last year that was not pleased about it, that we weren't going to water their new seed for their yard.
Did you switch when you were going to seed it, though? Because you completely switched the agreement that we had. We had an agreement for dormant seed.
We did not, we didn't switch the agreement. Them not showing up forced our hand by the point that we had gotten a reply from them, it was already snow on the ground.
Shouldn't you, as a council or staff, have been checking to see if they were doing it? I mean, or city engineer, to make sure that it was getting done?
That's how we found out that it didn't get done, that people on the council had asked if it was finished. And they looked into it, and he never got back to us.
I don't remember that being asked at a council meeting.
It wasn't asked at a council meeting. It was asked of Jess if it was done or not.
That was never relayed to me. We had no con, nobody has contacted us about it.
I understand that. And like I said, we wanted it done in the fall.
Okay, well, we want dormant seed then because I don't have the ability to keep the seed that you're going to put down and keep it going healthy.
So do you want to wait till the fall, then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, more of the yard will be gone then. And we've been waiting for three years. I thought we had this worked out last year. I'm actually offering to help you so that the guys from the city, because you're going to be using that fire hydrant to water yours, unless you're putting down some secret grass seed that doesn't need watering, then I'd like that on our side too. I'm just, I'm not asking for hoses. I'm not asking for sprinklers. I'll just turn it on and turn it off when you guys say it's to be turned off and turned off, or turned on and turned off on your property.
The issue being, April is that we set precedent last year with the resident where we were not allowing that to happen. We can't.
I think they're two different subjects, though. I mean, there's a two different set of circumstances there.
But you're asking for the same thing the other resident asked for, and we turned them down, so we can't make an exception to the rule and, you know. Wasn't there grass there to begin with?
Yeah, there was.
What happened to that grass?
Well, the army came in and they took the land on the other side right up to the property line, which created like a downhill effect. And so our topsoil ran off into your property. That's what happened to the grass. We need a little bit of topsoil put back down, and it was discussed last year. And then some other areas on the backs on your side of the fence would be filled in to keep the topsoil that you're putting down from falling out again.
Yeah, but, okay, so you took the grass out?
No, no. Weather took the grass out because of the slope. The land has moved.
On your side of the fence you're talking about?
Land has moved on my side of the fence because you dug out your side. And there is no buffer. There wasn't a two-foot buffer away from the fence. It goes right to the property line.
Where's the water runoff from your shed? Where does that go?
Down the flower hill in the opposite direction.
Opposite direction?
Well, it comes towards town. It doesn't go back towards the field. It comes towards the community garden.
On both sides of the roof?
On both sides of it.
So the north-facing side of the roof?
The majority of the water in our yard goes down our driveway, and it goes down into the flower hill garden. And there's a big ravine with rock in it. It goes underneath the fence, down in the far corner.
Danny or Jared, is that something that we can reach out to? The contractor about would be rescheduling again for the dormant seeding in the fall so that there's no watering issue on either side?
Yes.
And then when we get that response from him, Danny, are you able to reach out to the Herzogs and just kind of let them know what the next step is?
I sure can. And I was, Jared going to deal with this, or am I going to deal with this? Or, you know, we get too many cats in the bag here.
Thank you.
I mean, if you want to be the lead on the contact with them, I think that would be good. I just, I think Jared was the only one he's responded to in the past.
Right. I, I can get ahold of him. I did get his contact information finally, and I can call and talk to him.
Okay. Does that work?
I can't approve anything without my husband being with to have the conversation too. And he couldn't be here tonight because we couldn't get a sitter, so. And he couldn't be here tonight because we couldn't get a sitter, so.
Just does it work to have Danny reach out and then reach out to you?
I would love for Danny to reach out and, and that, but I, I think this is just a, a waste of time to put it off another year. We've, our, the last Public Works director wouldn't even come out and deal with it and he put it off several years.
Well, we have a new one and Danny's gonna take care of it.
Understandable. But you, to go another year is just insane.
Well, April, we can, we can send him out there after April fifteenth or, you know, whenever he says he's coming out there. Plant the seeds. You can water. We're not gonna allow you to hook up to the fire hydrant. You are choosing to not do that, to not water that grass. And I am not gonna approve, I'm not approving anybody to use city water without paying for it to come out there and do that. End of story.
You allow that fire hydrant to be used for the community garden?
It's not the water somebody's lawn.
Well, you're the one that destroyed the lawn. It, it was a simple, it, it, really, you guys are very emotional when you vote about stuff. It's a simple way to fix the problem and just be done with it. I've offered to help. I don't know exactly what you want, but you don't communicate and that's why we're where we are right now.
Daniel will reach out this week?
I will.
Thank you.
I am not here Friday, but I will try to get ahold of him.
Okay. Randy sanitation?
Hi, I'm Mayor and Council. I just wanted to put this back on the agenda so we could kinda talk about how the, how is, how everything's going and, because I know we had some hiccups with the changeover and stuff, so.
Yes, there's been, I mean, I think you guys have received more than a few complaints. I think each of us individually have received a few complaints. I don't think it was handled all that well on, on their communication end of transferring everything over. On top of that, issues with getting ahold of people from Randy's when residents have complaints. And that's not just something that I've heard from people in, in Montrose. I've heard it from people in Watertown where they're waiting on hold for twenty or thirty minutes and during the day, people don't have that kind of time to wait on hold.
Is it something that we need to think about discussing with Randy's or possibly pulling out of the contract and going out for a different hauler?
What is everyone's thoughts on that?
Well, I know for a fact that once we got ahold of Matt Herman, Matt did jump on it and take care of the issue.
And I have been rerouting people to him and he has been taking care of every issue, so. I know they kinda cleaned it up after that, but.
Yeah, we kind of anticipated when this day switched that there were gonna be some.
Issues, yeah.
Issues. New drivers, new routes and all that, so. You know, they assured us that they weren't gonna charge anybody any extra for coming out picking up trash in another day, at least for the month of April, from what I understand, so.
And hopefully people know to reach out to us if that is happening, if they're getting charged for extra pickup during the transition days.
Yeah. So I think we, we at least owe it to them through the month of April to see if they do get their act together and don't have any more problems. That's my opinion.
I agree. I mean, there was gonna be some sort of hiccup along this line. It wasn't, it wasn't gonna go smoothly.
And they are coming earlier, so people need to be aware. I know.
They're coming a lot.
I think they're asking people to have their trash carts out by six AM.
Oh, six or?
I think they're asking them to have the carts out by then so that they can start collecting right away at seven, so.
Okay. I will say that the communication was pretty poor on the whole thing, which probably is leading to a lot of the issues that they're experiencing right now, but. I say we, I agree with Tom, give him a month, kinda revisit it next month and.
And I do know that Matt did reply when I, I'd reached out to him on weekends and he had gotten back about setting up phone calls to remind residents and. And they are gonna mail out to every resident a updated calendar for the remainder of the year.
Yep.
So they did assure us of that. Is there any other thoughts or discussion on that?
No, I think they were just having issues with their customer service there for a while. I know there was quite a few residents who called and I think the customer service reps were.
A little overwhelmed.
With all of the misinformation that they were being told by, you know, other people, it was kinda word of mouth, so. I think, you know, we have faith in Matt. His, a few times, he's tried to handle it, but I think we should give it a little bit longer than the first couple weeks, that's for sure.
Okay.
Okay. New business?
The first item under new business is a resolution. This resolution is to help local municipalities maintain their local authority when it comes to housing developments and zoning decisions. There have been multiple bills introduced into the twenty-twenty-one by it, which would restrict local decision-making authority related to housing and zoning. This resolution will be sent to the state to support this effort to keep the decision-making local.
Yeah, and I mean, we'll send this resolution to our state rep, our state senator. So it kinda like you highlighted too, is that the, the state, they've, there's been different members across the state introducing bills to try to take away cities' individual rights to have say over what developments, developers can or can't do, so.
On that note, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-one.
I will second. Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Hi.
Mr. Marslick?
Hi.
Mr. Paradise?
Hi.
Ms. Andrioff?
Hi.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero.
The other item under new business is the Delano Senior Center request. The city received a letter from the Delano, City of Delano, asking for a contribution of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars for the continued support of the programs for seniors in Delano. The City of Delano identified at least one hundred forty residents of Montrose that used some or all of their services during twenty-twenty-one, including frozen meals, senior center activities and meals on-site and assistance with health and wellness programs. And I would just need a motion to approve that contribution.
So moved.
I will second.
Further discussion? I, I think it's a great thing for us to help out with, so. Mr. Marslick?
Hi.
Mr. Solars?
Hi.
Mr. Paradise?
Hi.
Ms. Andrioff?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero. I got no open forum requests. Upcoming meetings, EDA Tuesday, April nineteenth, twelve PM at the City Hall in Montrose. Special City Council meeting on May second, four PM here at the Community Center. Park and Rec, May fifth, five PM. Cancelled the regular City Council meeting from May ninth. Planning and zoning was rescheduled for May eighteenth at seven PM and a special City Council meeting was called for May twenty-third at seven PM. Acknowledgements. I, I wanna thank the, the parents and, and all the kids who came out on Saturday for the Easter egg hunt. You know, like, like you had said, David, that amount of time it took to put the eggs together in five minutes, they were all collected and gone, so.
The smiles on their face was worth the effort.
They were very happy. It was a good turnout.
It was a great turnout, yeah.
No, and that was the other thing I was going to just put under acknowledgements was to apologize that the banana bread did not show up as promised. There was a scheduling mishap on the banana bread trucks side that prevented them from showing up. So we did have several people that asked about it and it was a scheduling issue on their side. Any other acknowledgements?
Yeah, I, I'd like to acknowledge Danny for the amount of work he's done so far since he's taken this director job. Good job, Danny.
Thank you.
Second that.
Two jobs.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thanks. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Mr. Solars?
Hi.
Mr. Marslick?
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Mr. Paradise?
Hi.
Ms. Andrioff?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. We're adjourned.